Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Board of Commissioners, public meeting Tuesday, October 3rd, 2017. The time is 7:32. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, notice of this meeting was published in December 1st, 2016, issues of the Nutley Sun and the Herald News, and the December 2nd, 2016, issues of the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board, and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's Office. Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Commissioner Tucci?
Here.
Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Petracca?
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Here.
All present, Mayor.
I'd like everybody to take a moment of silence for the victims of the shooting in Las Vegas. Thank you. Madam Clerk, minutes?
Yes, Mayor, we have regular meeting minutes for August 15th, 2017, August 22nd, 2017, continued meeting of August 15th, August 28th, 2017, September 5th of 2017, and September 11th of 2017. I need a motion, please.
Move the minutes?
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, with the exception of September 5th and September 11th.
Commissioner Evans?
Yes.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
We have executive session minutes for August 15th, 2017, for Sessions 1 and 2, August 22nd, 2017, August 28th, 2017, September 5th of 2017, and September 11th of 2017. I need a motion, please.
Move the minutes?
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Again, with the exception, I, with the exception of September 5th and September 11th.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for minutes, Mayor.
I'm gonna skip around a little bit. Let's do correspondence. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. The Nutley Chamber of Commerce has submitted an event application to host Santa's arrival at the Nutley Park Oval on Friday, November 24th, 2017, between the hours of 2:00 and 3:00 p.m., with a rain date of Saturday, November 25th, between the hours of 11:00 and 12:00 p.m. I need a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
The Friends of Nutley Library have submitted a social fair permit application to hold their Lifetime Achievement Award Event on Wednesday, October 11th, 2017, between 5:00 and 9:00 p.m. at 93 Booth Drive in Nutley.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for communications, Mayor.
Let's go to reports. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, I have a sheetroot report for the month of September 2017.
Commissioner Evans?
Yes, I have a code enforcement report for the third quarter of 2017, as well as a code enforcement report for the month of September 2017.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, go to bills.
Yes, Mayor. Tuesday, October 3rd, 2017, Public Affairs, $98,522.75; Revenue and Finance, $2,532,363.32; Public Safety, $21,957.56; Public Works, $294,224.11; Parks and Public Property, $707,563.72; Total Payroll, $793,969.75, for a grand total of $4,448,601.11.
Move the bills?
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for bills, Mayor.
We have some special guests here tonight, so we're gonna do a proclamation, and Commissioner Tucci's gonna do some resolutions. So, it's my privilege to read this proclamation on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley. Whereas the Third Half Club of Nutley will host the Nutley High School Athletic Hall of Fame Induction Ceremony on Thursday, October 12th, 2017, and as a result of their outstanding individual accomplishments, the following athletes have been selected for enshrinement as members of the NHS Athletic Hall of Fame. Whereas Albert Alby Hallam, NHS Class of 1971, was a multi-talented athlete quietly demonstrating excellence in football, basketball, and baseball. He received all Essex County and all state honors. And whereas Sam Pataglia, NHS Class of 1964, made his mark on the football field being selected to the All Essex County and the All State Honors. Sam received a full scholarship to play for the University of Maryland, playing four years. He was active in the community, having served on the Board of Education, Board of Commissioners, and the longtime president of the Third Half Club. And whereas John Monaco, Class of 1962, was the only wrestler to have won the New Jersey State Championship in his junior year. He became a three-time national champion at Montclair State and was designated an All American. And whereas Dawn Marie Rose, NHS Class of 1983, was a multi-sport athlete excelling in soccer, basketball, and softball. She earned 10 varsity letters, was Female Athlete of the Year, and continued her success at the University of South Carolina and Fairleigh Dickinson University. And whereas Andy Joyner, NHS Class of 1984, Andy was an extraordinary pitcher for the Raider baseball team, earning All Essex County and All State Honors before matriculating to Fairleigh Dickinson and continuing his successful baseball career. And whereas Donald Solari, NHS Class of 1993, was the captain of the 1992 Nutley High School New Jersey State Championship Football Team, earning All Essex County, All State, and honorable mention All American honors. Don continued his career at Rutgers University. And whereas Kazanga Allen Brannigan, NHS Class of 1993, was supremely talented soccer player, earning All Essex County and All State honors. At Rutgers University, he was an All American and All Big East before being drafted to play for Major League Soccer. He played professionally for four years. And whereas Kim DiVincenzo, NHS Class of 1999, was one of the finest female athletes of her time, earning eight varsity letters. She excelled in basketball and softball. She earned All Essex County, All State honors in both sports, as well being recognized as NHS Female Athlete of the Year. And whereas the 1992 Nutley High School softball team earned the New Jersey Section 2 Group 3 State Championship and the New Jersey Group 3 Championship. And now therefore, I, Joseph Scarpelli, Mayor of the Township of Nutley, and the Board of Commissioners, wish to congratulate the 2017 inductees into the Nutley High School Hall of Fame and commend them for the outstanding examples they have set for the student athletes of today. And I hereby proclaim, October 12th, 2017, as the Third Half Club of Nutley, Nutley High School Athletic Day, Hall of Fame Day.[506.62][506.62](APPLAUSE). I see Mr. Pataglia, and Mr. Searle, and Mr. Barry in the back. You wanna come up and say a few words and maybe take a picture?
Thank you. On behalf of the Third Half Club, Stephen and Jack, we greatly appreciate the continued support by all the Commissioners here. We are very proud of the 78 years worth of support to our youth and the foundation of this Hall of Fame, and we're greatly privileged that this year I have had the opportunity to be selected to go in. So, again, we appreciate the proclamation. We'll make sure all of our attendees, and hopefully we see you all next week.
We have copies for the honorees, and wanna take a picture with us?
Yeah, why not?
All right.
(LAUGHING).
Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Let's get my glasses here. Whereas on Sunday, October 8th, 2017, the Nutley Bellevue Columbus Day and Italian Heritage Month Parade Committee will celebrate its 35th Annual Columbus Day Parade Festivities, commemorating Columbus' historic voyage to the New World. And whereas the Parade Committee has a long history of commemorating Columbus Day each year in the Township of Nutley, which is looked forward to and enjoyed by both spectators and participants alike. And whereas the Nutley Bellevue Columbus Day and Italian Heritage Month Parade Committee celebrated its annual honorary dinner on Thursday, September 28th, 2017, at Nanina's in the Park. And whereas this year's grand marshal is Al Limbo Jr. And whereas Al Limbo Jr. is joined by the Lifetime Achievement Award recipient, Anthony Iannarone, the Italian Heritage Award recipient, Dr. Louis Crouppie, Bellevue Woman of the Year Cindy Sika, Bellevue Man of the Year Police Chief Mark Minakini, Nutley Woman of the Year Marie Vicarello, Nutley Man of the Year Police Chief Thomas Strumalo, 2017 Renaissance Man Henry Miola, 2017 Italian Business Leader John Appicella, along with Community Excellence Award recipient Ruth Bedford. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex, joined with the citizens of Nutley, to salute and congratulate all the recipients as they are honored here this evening. I very proudly move this resolution.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Mayor, if I might, these resolutions will be presented on behalf of the Board of Commissioners at our ceremony on Sunday at 11:00 p.m. in front of the Columbus Statue.
Anybody here tonight?
I'm sorry. Hey, I'm sorry.
Nobody's here from the committee, right?
I don't believe so.
I don't see any, okay. All right. Public comment on agenda items only. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizen's comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the Mayor or Presiding Officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of the quorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Anybody like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening on agenda items
Good evening to the entire Commission. My name is Gerald Ferraro. I live at 34 Roosevelt Street. I was here on September 19th and made my initial presentation for a three-tiered nursing home to be part of the Hockler Road Tree Development Project. I have with me now, and I'll give it to the officer to give to the town clerk, because she is the keeper of records, 45 additional signatures provided by a third party that's assisting me, Blair Resempolich of Nutley. And I still continue to be assisted by Penny Landry and Mrs. Terry Quirk. Again, I renew my initial verbal application to the Commission to collectively present all this to Mr. Gene Diaz, the CEO and project manager of the Road Tree Development Project. I have reached out for Dr. Stanton, the Dean of Academia, to tell her I was going to be here tonight. She's the Dean of Academia for Seton Hall. And I did reach out for Mr. Diaz. I didn't get a response, but hopefully the Commission can at some other juncture. And again, I thank you for whatever assistance that you could provide to me and to all the citizens of Nutley, Clifton, and the surrounding area with regard to my request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferraro. Any else want to be heard on agenda items only? Seeing none, can we close the public comment?
May I ask? Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Board of Fishers, any announcements? Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, my first announcement this evening is that the Department of Parks and Recreation is excited to announce that, beginning with this school year, which just started, we've gone paperless. So, we will have the information up on the web. You can sign up for e-Alerts at www.nutleynj.org, on Facebook, /nutleyparksandrec. And you can pay for registrations and other items through Community Pass, and we will be completely paperless moving forward. My second announcement of this evening, Mayor, is that I just want to thank all of our Parks and Recreation personnel for the hard work they did this weekend with the return of the festival in the park. It was attended by thousands of people. It's been gone for many years. We're bringing it back better and stronger than ever. We have a good prototype to follow because it was done so very well over the years. I'd just like to thank all of our residents who supported it, and all of the vendors who participated, and of course, the entire Board of Commissioners, especially Public Safety with police, fire, and first aid and rescue, and health department for assuring that everyone was up to snuff as far as the sanitary requirements are concerned. So, thank everyone for your support. That's all I have, Mayor.
Very great event. It was a great event.
Thank you.
Mayor, just a quick comment. And Commissioner Tucci, as we discussed at the actual festival, there's many things that represent Nutley. We have many new residents in town, and so actually being able to resurrect something that actually is representative of what Nutley is, what Nutley is about, especially in the Memorial Park section, because many people don't realize that even the trees that are there are commemorative to the World War I veterans who actually died in World War I. It's actually commemorating them. So, there's a lot of history attached to that section of the park, but also the nature of the culture that was there without the alcohol, as we discussed.
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
I think it was very valuable because what you saw was families were out, children out having fun, and as I walked, people were commenting. It's been a long time since we've had something like this in Nutley, so again, congratulations to you and your team.
Thank you. Commissioner, you make a very good point because we need to acclimate our new residents as to what our history is, all right, and what our traditions have been over the years so that they also can join our larger Nutley family and keep this town the great place that it is. So, thank you for your comments, Commissioner.
Any other Commissioner announcements? Yeah, I'd like to ditto what Commissioner Evans said, and there's one word the Commissioner used, and I know it's close to everyone's heart here, is family. Bringing families together in a day and age when we don't see much of that anymore, but here in Nutley, to keep that alive, I really commend your Commissioner Tucci for the work you're doing, and thank you. Let's move on to ordinance introductions. I have three of them. Ordinance number 3370, bond ordinance providing for the improvement of the water supply and distribution system in and by the Township of Nutley in the County of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating $169,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $161,000 bonds or notes of the Township for financing part of the costs thereof. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertised in the Nutley Sun, together with the notice required by law and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners, to be held at a second reading on November 8th, 2017. I move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Ordinance number 3371, bond ordinance providing for the reconstruction of various roadways and sidewalks in the Township of Nutley in the County of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating $409,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $388,550 bonds or notes of the Township for financing part of the costs thereof. I move this ordinance be passed to a second reading, advertising in the Nutley Sun, together with the notice required by law and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners, to be held at a second reading on November 8th, 2017. I move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Ordinance number 3372, bond ordinance appropriating $1,181,300, and authorizing the issuance of $1,122,234 bonds or notes of the Township for various improvements or purposes authorized to be undertaken by the Township of Nutley in the County of Essex, New Jersey. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading, advertising in the Nutley Sun, together with the notice required by law and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners, to be held at a second reading on November 8th, 2017. I move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
All right, public hearings. Commissioner Petracca?
Yes. This is for a police contract. It's a four-year contract, and I'll read them individual tonight. But before I read them, I did bring our labor attorney here. I don't know if you want him to speak at the public portion of it, or if we could bring him up. But before you come up, Ramon, I do have a couple of comments to make. I have a whole folder going back and forth, and this contract has been a long drawn-out process. And there's been a lot of talk, you know, all over town, is 3% of an increase too much of a raise to give to anybody in the township, you know, in light of Roach leaving and everything else that's going on in the town. So, you know, when we went through this, and I worked very hard with Sam Correll on it, and I want to thank her too, and Ramon, I have a lot of facts up here that I don't want to bore everybody with, but just the biggest thing that was the turning point for me was getting back longevity, you know, for all the new hired policemen moving forward. And I, you know, we've talked about it a lot at these commission meetings, and there's been a lot of talk back and forth, and I actually went and reviewed these numbers again after our last meeting because I want everybody and all the residents to know that, you know, I would never give this store away, so to speak, but I do want to be fair to our police officers. And with cops being villainized all over the country today, you know, traditionally, you know, I guess it would have been a 2% increase, even though I think for that one point, it's advantageous for us to get back that longevity, and that's a savings that will endure forever here in Nutley. But I have, having three sons myself, I don't really know that I could ever push anybody into law enforcement, anyway, my kids, because of what these guys are up against. So, I'll let Ramon go over a couple of the details, what's going on around in the state. But I just urge, before we vote on this, to the police officers, one of the biggest reasons why I did my part up here for you guys is because I really want the morale to be high, and I know that you guys have a tough job going out there every day and night and beating these streets and dealing with what you deal with, and then have somebody, you know, videotape you and hang you up on every word. You know, my incentive to do this was to give you guys incentive to keep pulling cars over and to keep Nutley safe, which it is a very safe community, compared to what's going on, well, through our area as well. So, with that being said, you know, I will hold your feet to the fire as well, you know, and the chief's feet to the fire, as well as, you know, keep up the good work that you guys are doing. And I think, you know, after we vote, you'll see the support in your township that stands behind all of you. In this enclosing, I see a lot of people every day, and I have to tell you, since I've been a Commissioner, and the Nutley Police Department and I have been through a lot. You know, we've been through arbitration, layoffs, you name it, we've been through a lot. I'll just leave it at that. But whenever I go through Nutley, or if I'm in my store, I have to tell you, people say one thing to me: Pay the cops. There's not one resident that ever came in my store or my passing and said, you know, these guys make too much money, what are we doing? You know what? The residents of this town really appreciate the job that you do. So, you know, I hope we have a full Board support tonight, and I just want to thank you guys for being patient. I know this took a lot of time. We had a lot of ups and downs as far as the transitional aid, losing some of that this year, and, you know, working together, we've managed that to the best of our abilities. But again, you know, I just want you guys to leave here knowing that, you know, when you're up in the air about pulling a car over or doing, you know, going above and beyond, think of tonight, because if your township goes to bad for you guys, I think that you should, you know, keep up that good level of police, and that's kept Nutley a great town. Ramon, I'll turn it over to you.
Mr. Rivera?
Good evening, Commissioners, Administrators. Thank you for having me. Again, Ramon Rivera from Scrincie and Hollenbeck. And as Commissioner Petracca stated, we did spend a lot of time with the PBA Union working on this contract and other contracts. And by way of background, I don't know if you remember, but we did go to interest arbitration in the prior contract, and this contract, we were able to successfully resolve without going to arbitration. So, I thought that was a credit to everyone involved, and I just wanted to start there. I'm not gonna go over the details because I'm sure you're familiar with the terms, but one of the points I did want to emphasize is that in this agreement, we did not make any adjustments to healthcare contributions, which in all the other negotiations that I'm doing around the state, most unions are pushing hard to freeze or reduce the Chapter 78 contributions. And by this contract, which, you know, goes through 2020, your health benefit contributions that you're getting from all your public employees, particularly your police, will not change, and you'll continue to benefit from their contributions toward the cost of your premiums. In addition, the clothing and maintenance allowances were adjusted, as well as others, which are gonna lead to savings for the township. Now, there are many other contracts in the state which are either at 3% or close to 3%, and so it's not necessarily a unique situation to award police or fire 3%. I can just point out that in Asbury Park, Brick, and Belleville, they all negotiate 3% deals for 2016, 2017, and going beyond, particularly in Bloomfield, the place where I'm negotiating a contract right now with the FNB, but where we successfully negotiated with the PBA, that contract exceeded 2%. It didn't get quite to 3%, but we did change health benefit contributions there. And that was a requirement that the PBA pushed back on in order to settle the contract. So, there are trends now that are showing these contracts moving up toward 3%, at the same time reducing the contributions toward health benefits. The longevity piece, I mean, you know, to eliminate longevity for new hires is a value that will exceed the extra additional cost if you're gonna say it's above the 2%. 2% is the minimum. That's what you get with the interest arbitration statute. But you can and are allowed to go above that, certainly under the law, but the justification for that is what you get back. Eliminating longevity for these additional new hires will save you in the long term, and quite candidly, it's fair distribution of your town's assets because everyone's going to benefit from the percentage as opposed to just those who hit those longevity milestones. So, there are, those are some of the reasons why I think it's a fair contract for the police, as well as the township, and there are trends throughout the states that are showing that the average is moving up toward 3% for your police, fire, and particularly for your teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rivera.
And before I read it, also, I know Commissioner Evans and I both talked to the DCA, and this is a very important point to me. I know his first name was John, Tom. Do you recall his last name?
Eskelson.
Exactly. So, Commissioner Evans gave him the contract as well, and I followed up with a phone call, and I have to say, the DCA, really, John said that getting back longevity is really a no-brainer for that extra point. And also, he, you know, critiqued a little bit. He said that, over the last 10 years almost that I'm in office, that we definitely picked the low-hanging fruit, and, you know, moving forward... fruit and, you know, moving forward here in Nutley, we have eight steps to get into top pay, but some of the negotiations have been going to 10. But I really felt, feel strongly about even having the DCA onboard with this because, especially because of the transitional aid and they that we're fighting whatever, you know, fighting for every year. Okay, so with that being said, I'll read these by title. Ordinance number 3364, an ordinance to fix the salaries of certain officers and employees of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, effective January 1st, 2017, be ordained by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, New Jersey. This is for the year, we have to introduce every year, correct counsel?
You have to do it separately for each year, but you don't have to read the entire ordinance.
Okay, so this is for 2017.
Would anybody like to be heard on ordinance number 3364?
In light of everything that's going on in this country, they deserve this and more.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard on ordinance number 3364? Seeing none?
Move to close it. Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Counsel has done some extensive research.
We're just closing the public hearing.
Oh, okay, okay. Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Go. I hear you're good at that Steve.
Counsel has completed some extensive research onto whether I can vote on the contract or not. His decision has been that I will have to recuse myself due to a conflict of interest and he gives this advice to protect us all, both the township and the integrity of the contract. I cannot even comment on the contract, but what I can do is comment on you, on the police department and on the safety of the community. So, that's what I intend to do. This gentleman that just came up, I'll tell you, I couldn't have said it any better, it was short, but it made its point. What's going on around the country today and the difficulties that we're facing, we need to make sure that our police departments and the offices who serve are not only fully equipped, but that their morale is up and that they know without any doubt they have the support of their governing body and the citizens of their community. Now, as of late, I've been traveling all over the country, I've done a lot of traveling and I've got to tell you, when I mention I'm from Nutley, New Jersey, the comments are always positive, they're good, but the police department always comes up, especially when I'm talking to police officers, because many of you who are sitting here and some who are not here today had impact on 9/11 several years ago, when you met police officers from all over the country who were in New York City and some of the recent disasters around the country, some of you have gone to. And the impression Commissioner Petracca that they left on these other police officers and citizens was outstanding. And I don't think there's enough money in the world that could ever pay a police officer for the job that they do, but I would wind down by saying this, Commissioner Petracca really frameworked it and he says, you know, you're going to do your job, we know you're going to do it, but I ask you to continue to be proactive, continue to do the things that I see as I travel around town, maybe driving a senior citizen from Shopright to their house who's struggling along on a winter day with their packages, comforting the soul of parents who lost their children as a result of drug abuse and drug overdoses. The things the public doesn't see are the things that you're really good at. We know you'll be there all the time. Look, I have an alarm sometimes that goes off in my house and I know the comfort I have in knowing that you're there within two minutes is astounding. It's great to know that we live in a safe community because of you. So, I just want to thank you for the work that you've done and that you continue to do and Commissioner Petracca and all the Commissioners here. We're, I'll tell you what, we're all blessed here, we have a governing body that's for this police department. They are, you know, not too many governments, not too many communities and police departments can say that, a lot of them have resistance from even the people that they elect to office. But I could tell you, I've sat with these gentlemen, talking to them about this great police department in this community and I want to thank you also gentlemen for backing up the men and the women in blue. Thank you very much. I have to abstain.
Commissioner Tucci.
Yes, before I vote, I just have a few statements, I'm not voting against the House Commissioner Rogers, nor is Ellen, but I just want to give a little history of what occurred here. Prior to receiving our final numbers on our state aid and what we were going to receive, Commissioner Petracca, with the blessing of this Board of Commissioners, negotiating in good faith, all right, our PBA unions, all right, came to what I believe is a very fair and reasonable settlement. And in any negotiation, some things we're happy about, some things we're not so happy about and there's always give and take, but I think in the long run, this contract will absolutely benefit this community. I want to thank everyone involved, starting with the Commissioner and all of our police officers, our chief and everyone that was involved, and Ramon, all right, who helped us in this great negotiation. I think what it does for us, it keeps Nutley the safe place that we want it to be. And as a husband and a father and a grandfather and a brother, all right, it's a peace of mind that we require. It's not something that's desirable, it's something that's essential. And I can run all the parks programs in the world, we can issue as many proclamations as we want, all right, and do all the good things that we do, but if our community isn't safe, it isn't anywhere. So, for that, I thank you and I very proudly vote aye.
Commissioner Evans.
I'm going to be very long. Somebody needs to take a break, this would be a good time to do it. Just a couple of things. As you know, we've been talking about the loss of aid, we lost 1.8 million dollars worth of aid this past year. When you look at the management of the municipality, five departments, and you look at our property tax bill, which everyone is quite concerned about, running all five departments, including public safety, basically represents 35% of your tax bill. Right, so the other 65% of your tax bill is basically the taxes paid to the county and to the school. When you look at 35%, the most significant part of that is the cost of public safety. There's nothing that I can point to today that tells me that the cost of public safety is cheap. It's not, it's expensive. But when you look at our responsibility as a Board of Commissioners to provide for the health, welfare and the safety of the community, one of the things that I have seen over my years is that if you don't invest in public safety, your community starts to dwindle. And when you lose parts of your community, the money that is required to get it back, it's actually unaffordable to try and get it back, so once you lose it. So, two things about the contract, one is, as everyone has said, I commend the police department for their efforts every day and every year to actually stand up and protect this community. You're all to be commended for that. The second element of this is that it's incumbent upon us as the Board of Commissioners to do everything we can to ensure that the tax dollars we're spending, that we're doing those in the most efficient way. And we have a lot of work to do in these coming months to address the aspects of what we can do to absorb a 1.8 million dollar loss in state aid. But as Al had mentioned, we both had the opportunity to speak to the state, state representative who looks at contracts and it was very clear that a 2% contract with a 1% litigation settlement, which is the composition of the actual 3%, without a giveback of healthcare funding, was actually a very fair and reasonable expectation in terms of settling out a contract. So, with that, I applaud you, I also vote yes.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Yes, I want to reiterate what everybody said, but we thank you for your service and we thank you for keeping our community safe. Aye.
Next ordinance, Commissioner.
I'm getting there. Okay, this is ordinance number 3365, I believe it's for year 2018.
Anybody like to be heard on ordinance number 3365? Seeing none?
Move to close the public hearing. Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Abstain on advice of counsel.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Ordinance number 3.
We need to move the ordinance.
I'm sorry, move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
I can't even move it.
I want to move again, you have to abstain.
All right, abstain.
Abstain. Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Ordinance number 3366.
Anybody like to be heard on ordinance number 3366? Seeing none?
This is for year 2019, I move the ordinance.
Close the hearing.
Closed the public hearing, I'm sorry.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Abstain.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
I move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Abstain.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
And this is ordinance number 3367, this is for year 2020 for our contract.
Anybody like to be heard on ordinance number 3367? Seeing none?
Move to close. Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Abstain.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
I think we're finished.
Move the ordinance.
I'm sorry, move the ordinance.
Second.
A lot of moving parts.
Commissioner Rogers.
Abstain.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
I very proudly vote aye. I also want to, just before we close this all out, I do want to thank the Chief, Chief Strumaw, he's done an excellent job keeping the peace. Why, there was a lot of rumors this is going to go through, isn't it? And I think we really have come a long way with the union, Gerard and PJ there, there's really different, a different vibe there and it's exciting and I just want to thank you. I want to really, really thank Sam Corolla from the bottom of my heart, the hours and these numbers that I've called her up at 11 o'clock to go over and go over and go over and then first thing in the morning when she had it all done, go over it again. So, thank you so much, Sam, Ramon, you've been great to our municipality and I appreciate your professionalism in getting this job done. So, I vote aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Rogers.
Yes.
Ordinance number.
Oh, you know what, I think Gerard wants to speak. Oh. I apologize if I missed the window to come up. Gerard Two Sub, 220 Chestnut Street, Nutley, New Jersey. I represent the men and women of Nutley Police Department as the PBA President.
PJ San Domenico, 228 Chestnut Street, Nutley, New Jersey. I'm the state delegate for Nutley PBA Local 33.
It's much more enjoyable to come up to the podium on a pleasant note. I would like to thank Commissioner Petracca for all this hard work in this endeavor, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tucci, Commissioner Evans, Mayor Scarpelli. We appreciate all the things that you do for us, it helps us. Had a long week, a lot of family problems this week. We appreciate what you do for us because it helps us do for the town. And this is for my men because they work hard to keep this town safe and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Gerard. Thank you, PJ. Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number 3368. Tonight, ladies and gentlemen, we have a public hearing. The first one was introduced by myself on September 5th, 2017. This ordinance is entitled, an ordinance to amend the code of the Township of Nutley, Chapter 217, entitled Animals, to add Article 6, entitled Sale of Dogs and Cats. And I hereby certify that this public hearing and ordinance has been advertised in full in the Nutley Sun issue of September 14th and September 22nd, 2017, and a copy was posted on the Township of Nutley Bulletin Board, First Floor Town Hall, and copies made available to all members of the general public. So moved. Anybody like to be, we're going to open the public hearing on ordinance number 3368. Anybody like to be heard, just before we do open it up, just want to caution everybody, we had a lot of testimony at the last commission meeting, so let's try to keep our comments short and to the point and not reiterate what was previously testified to. Anybody like to be heard on ordinance number 3368? Seeing none?
Move to close.
Need a sec. Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
And then move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye, I'm sorry.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Mayor, may I make a statement? Sure. Thank you. I'd like to thank the Board of Commissioners for supporting this ordinance. I believe we are the 168th town in the state of New Jersey who has this ordinance and the purpose of this ordinance is never, ever intended to inhibit the ability of anyone to open a business. We welcome businesses here in Nutley, we welcome pet stores, but this is a life-saving, and let me emphasize, life-saving piece of law that will certainly serve the community well and serve, obviously, the people of Nutley well. So, I know dogs and cats and animals, they can't speak, but if they could, I'm sure you'd hear a lot of barks and meows right now, so thank you very, very much. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, tonight I have a public hearing on a bond ordinance providing for the improvement of Father Glot's back soccer field and basically this is to replace the turf and expand it into the, what could be considered the end zones. This was introduced by myself on September 5th. I'll read it by title only and it reads as follows, bond ordinance providing for improvement of Father Glot's back soccer field in and by the Township of Nutley, the County of Essex, State of New Jersey, appropriating 350,150 dollars and authorizing the issuance of 87,529 dollars in bonds or notes of the township for financing part of the costs thereof. I hereby certify that this public hearing and ordinance have been advertised in full in the Nutley Sun issue of September 14th and a copy was posted on the Township of Nutley Bulletin Board, First Floor Town Hall, and copies made available to all members of the general public.
Anybody like to be heard on ordinance number 3369? Seeing none? I move that we close the hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Resolutions. Commissioner Rogers. Mr. Mayor, I have a resolution, resolution number 216-17. This resolution is created, and we do this every year, because there is a very important health issue called breast cancer that from time to time, we need to heighten public awareness of the need to, for women to get preventive healthcare, so that is the spirit and the purpose of this ordinance and I move it based on what we have here in the resolution. Did I say ordinance? I'm sorry, the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, Mayor. Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need to acquire specialized and professional ACA reporting services to mature compliance with IRS regulations for year 2017 reporting and whereas such services may be acquired as a non-fair and open contract pursuant to the provisions of NJSA 19:44A-20.4 or 20.5 as appropriate and whereas Prime Point or 20.5 as appropriate, and whereas Prime Point LLC located 2 Springside Road, Mount Holly, New Jersey, has submitted a proposal dated September 18, 2017, with an anticipated cost of $6,300 to complete these services and ensure compliance on behalf of the Township of Nutley, and whereas funds are available from budget account 701526200 and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution, and whereas Prime Point LLC has completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certification which certifies Prime Point has not made any reportable contributions to a political or candidate committee in the Township of Nutley in the previous one year, and that the contract will prohibit Prime Point from making any reportable contributions through the term of the contract. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, hereby authorize the Commissioner of Parks and Public Property to enter into a contract with Prime Point LLC. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley entered into a specialized professional services as a non-fair and open contract pursuant to the provision of NJSA 19:44A-20.5 with Veridian Environmental Consultants, PO Box 3009, Upper Montclair, New Jersey, for groundwater investigation services on April 4, 2017 via Resolution Number 80-17. And whereas the Director of Parks and Public Property has recommended the following change order from said contract, this is change order number one for groundwater investigation services in the amount of $299.06. The money is available from capital ordinance 3323K and has been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that change order number one in the amount of $299.06 be and is hereby approved. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight I have a resolution number 213-17. It's a memorandum of agreement related to our transitional aid with the state of New Jersey. The, under public law, 2015C63, transitional aid can be extended to local localities when they experience financial distress. For Nutley, that distress is unprecedented as it relates to the departure of the Hoffmann Roche Pharmaceutical Company from the Township of Nutley and their exiting of the state. The fact that they have left the state has actually gave us the window of opportunity to actually apply for transitional aid, which is referred to as transitional aid light. The important aspect of this is, last year we received $5.5 million worth of aid. This year we received $3.3,675,000 worth of aid, or a reduction roughly of $1.8 million. $1,825,000. As we've said before, the Commissioners continue to work on planning for 2018 to address the shortfall and what will be necessary in order to ensure that we manage, do our best to manage taxes for the township. Now therefore be resolved that in addition to all other sums provided by the state of New Jersey or its municipalities, subdivisions thereof, the Director hereby authorizes payment of the transitional aid funds in the amount of $3,675,000 to the municipality in support of its budget. Be further resolved that the municipality agrees to work with the Division to remedy the municipal's structural, municipality's structural budget imbalance and will comply with all laws, regulations, local finance board notices and any government administrative and oversight measure necessary for the fiscal recovery of the municipality, and that therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Mayor and Chief Financial Officer are hereby authorized to execute the attached memorandum of agreement for the receipt of the 2017 calendar year transitional aid to localities between the Division of Local Governmental Services and the Township of Nutley, so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
I vote aye, but I just want to emphasize that this structural budget imbalance was caused solely by Hoffmann Roche leaving.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Treasurer be and she is hereby authorized to refund overpayment of tax charges in the amount of $775.55 as it relates to Block 704-9 and Block 4902, Lot 6, 2017, so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Treasurer be and she is hereby authorized to refund overpayment of water charges in the amount of $129.54 for Block 7605, Lot 14, so moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
My final resolution for tonight is the appointment of a qualified purchasing agent for the Township of Nutley. I'm very pleased to read this resolution wherein Kathy Rampashevsky will become the qualified purchasing agent for the township. It is a significant amount of work that's required in order to actually achieve the qualified purchasing agent status, including the passing of the state exam, which Kathy has successfully done. In order to actually cover the town prior to this, this title has been consolidated, as well as the tax collector title, with our CFO. So we've been basically leveraging the licenses of one individual with an expectation that that person should be looking at our treasury function, but also trying to manage these other departments. While we did that for a short time, and it's actually benefited us from a tax standpoint, it's no longer advisable, and with the advice and recommendation of our outside auditors, we need to, in effect, separate these responsibilities. So with that, I am, it's my pleasure to read the following resolution. Whereas the Township of Nutley is subject to the provisions of Local Public Contracts Law, NJSA 48:11-1, whereas NJSA 48:11-9 establishes the criteria for qualifying as a qualified purchasing agent. Whereas Kathy Rampashevsky has successfully completed the required course of study at Rutgers University and has passed the required examination administered by the New Jersey Division of Local Governmental Services. Whereas Kathy has met all of the requirements established by NJSA 48:11-9 and on June 9, 2015, received her certification as a qualified purchasing agent from the Department of Community Affairs of the state of New Jersey. Whereas Kathy continues to fulfill all requirements of the continuing education requirement necessary to maintain her certification in good order. Whereas Kathy is an employee of the Township of Nutley in good standing with 15 years of service, including duties in the Department of Public Affairs, Office of the Mayor, and in 2012 transferred to the Department of Revenue and Finance, Purchasing Department. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, New Jersey, that Kathy is hereby appointed qualified purchasing agent effective October 1, 2017. So moved. Kathy, congratulations.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Hey Kathy, you're one of those committed and dedicated public servants that we're blessed to have in Nutley. You know, when the Commissioner was speaking, I'm thinking about all the things you do that you really don't have to do, that are not in your job requirement. You're all over the place, you're helping everyone you possibly can, you've been a help to my department. I see you out there Christmas time and New Year's and 4th of July, so Commissioner Evans, congratulations, great choice, thank you very much, and thank you Kathy, I vote yes.
Commissioner Tucci.
Yes, Kathy, congratulations, well deserved. This not only makes your job easier, but it makes our job easier, so thank you again on behalf of the Parks Department because this will absolutely streamline things, and Commissioner Evans, great appointment, congratulations to you, I vote aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
I would like to vote aye, and I'd like to say, there's a couple words, and the one word that I'll highlight is, will be tonight, will be true. And I'd just like to say three things, Kathy. You're a true person, you're a true professional, and you're a true friend, and I thank you for all three of them. I vote aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Kathy, congratulations on the appointment, I know you're going to do a great job, and as Commissioner Tucci said, I think that streamlines our processing, so congratulations, and I proudly vote aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Petracca.
I have Resolution 223-17, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners. Township of Nutley, County of Essex, New Jersey, that Resolution Number 205-17 was adopted on September 19, 2017, Title Chapter 159. Budget amendment, Safe and Secure Communities Grant is hereby rescinded, and move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye, and my- Aye. And my final resolution is number 224-17. This is an insertion into the budget for $16,634.48 for the bulletproof vest, I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Resolution Number 21917. Whereas raffle applications have been received from the following organizations. Rotary Club of Nutley, License Number 4717, on premise merchandise raffle to be held Saturday, December 2, 2017. Friends of Phoenix Center Foundation, License Number 4817, off premise merchandise raffle to be held Tuesday, November 14, 2017. Good Shepherd Academy Homeschool Association, License Number 5017, off premise 5050 cash raffle to be held November 17, 2017. Good Shepherd Academy Homeschool Association, License Number 5117, on premise merchandise raffle to be held Friday, November 17, 2017. Whereas the applications have been reviewed and approved by the municipal clerk and the police department, they'll now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the aforementioned licenses are approved and municipal clerk is authorized to issue the raffle license, and move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need to acquire the service of a professional engineer to assist the township in defending itself against a tort claim made by Hoffmann Roche and other environmental issues as a non-fair and open contract pursuant to provisions of NJSA 19:44A-20.4 or 20.5 as appropriate. Whereas the Chief Financial Officer has determined and certified in writing that the value of the aggregate services provided by the vendor for January 1, 2017 through December 31, 2017 will not exceed $15,000. And whereas Matt McDonald, 111 Wood Avenue South, Wood Avenue South, Island, New Jersey, has submitted an acceptable proposal to provide such professional services as required to assist the township attorney in responding to the claim made by Hoffmann Roche and other environmental issues. Such services will be billed monthly and actual time and expenses occur in accordance with the submitted fee schedule. And whereas Matt McDonald Services will be coordinated and managed by John Rolak, Principal of the firm, with 40 years of experience, and Roy Redman, LSRP, New Jersey, with 35 years of experience. And whereas Matt McDonald Professional Engineering Services has completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certificate which certifies that they have not made any reportable contributions to a political or candidate committee in the Township of Nutley in the previous one year, and the contract will prohibit them from making any appropriate, reportable contributions through the term of the contract. Whereas the funds are available from account number 701012200 in the amount of $15,000 and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, authorizes the Mayor to enter into the contract in according with NJSA 19:44A-20.5 or 20.4, and Matt McDonald Professional Services for the proposal as stated above. Be therefore resolved that business disclosure entity and the determination of value be placed on file with the resolution, I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. This last resolution is introduced on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. I can summarize this, right, Council? So, this is an amendment to our redevelopment agreement between the Township of Nutley and Kingsland Street Urban Renewal, also known as the Medical School. And what it does is, it deals mostly with parking, and that there'll be 467 permanent parkings located on the Nutley side. There'll be 55 on-street parking on-site, and there'll be 196 temporary service parking spaces located, and if for some reason that a garage is never built on the Clifton side, then they will be banked and put into a different spot on the site and leave the triangular lot open for redevelopment. So, this is number, Resolution Number 22117, Resolution authorizing the execution of an amendment to the redevelopment agreement between the Township of Nutley and Kingsland Street Urban Renewal LLC. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Just before I vote, I'd just like to say that I, from the start of this, I've had a lot of reservations about this resolution, and, you know, in the fear that temporary becomes permanently, like we discussed, and with this parking garage going on the Clifton side, I had an hour conversation with Johnny Lusimo, pretty much telling me that unless the sky falls out, that it will be temporary and that the parking garage will be built. So, with that being said, I'd just like to add, when the Nutley residents see parking spots going to Kingsland Avenue, correct? Is that where the temporary parking will be, almost to Kingsland?
Beyond the, the temporary will be on the lot closest to Kingsland.
Yeah, on the lot closest to Kingsland. I just want to remind all the residents that this is a temporary situation in the light of the timeline needed for the school to progress, to get their accreditation, so. With all that being said, I don't want to spoil the timeline, but I just want to make sure again that this, that temporary doesn't become permanent over there, I vote aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. That concludes the business portion of the meeting. Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the Mayor or Presiding Officer of the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of the quorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Hi.
Good evening.
Oh, good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Hi. My name is Diane E. Sergio, I'm an owner and resident at Arbor Hills on River Road. Now, I read the article, it was in Thursday, December 1, 2016, Nutley Sun, about Commissioner, says town solid waste deals are saving taxpayers money. I- How do you do it? Thanks, honey, thank you. All right. Anyway, I filed for an Open Public Records Act with the request for the contract, you know, that Arbor Hills and Nutley has, and I have a question about that because we are still being charged at Arbor Hills for disposal costs. Now my understanding is, I'm a taxpayer, so therefore my waste, all right, that gets removed, and then if I want to throw a couch out to the curb in Nutley, there's a certain time of the month or whenever that you can do it because that's covered with my taxes. But Arbor Hills doesn't seem to understand that, and my question is, if you've reimbursed them, why are they double-dipping and still charging us? Now who's, I mean, is somebody not telling the truth?
Mr. Janet Temple, you have any insight into the Arbor Hills?
Yeah.
I really don't, Mr. Mayor, I can look into it, I have no idea.
Yeah, I have, in fact, I have a sheet here that shows what they charge us for removal of a couch. Now I can, and they also have at the bottom, because I know someone will say this, additional $25 fee to remove it from a unit. In other words, we utilize our maintenance people to remove the item from the unit to the disposal-
Is that cost that Arbor Hill charges you as a resident?
Yes, and I'm an owner.
Have you brought this up at the association?
And they look at me like, you never see what a deer wouldn't sit with the headlights?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, well, that's, that's, that's the look I get with it.
Counselor, Counselor, I'll have my office send you the contract that we have with them. I know Diane and I-
I have it right here.
We and I, all right, well, I want to make sure it's the updated one. I want to make sure everything's current.
Yes, I just got this a week and a half ago.
Okay, then, certainly you could hand it in, but I'll certainly get you one from our office. It may be an issue, I know Diane and I had discussed this some time, between the owners of the condos and management there, but let's, listen, there's no problem in looking into it, so I'll bring that contract. Diane, why don't you, did you have a copy you could give us?
Well, I have a copy of what?
The contract?
Yeah, I have it right here.
Oh, give it, give it to us, all right? I want to see if that's the same-
Is that your copy?
Excuse me, this is my only copy.
All right, I'll give one from the commission-
Okay, he'll get one from me. I just want to make sure you have the right one.
But my point is, they're looking at like, listen, one of the Board Directors, I won't say who, said to me, Diane, they'd like you to go away, because they know they're not right in doing this. They know that there's, they shouldn't be charging me as an owner and as a resident of Nutley, because I'm paying taxes for these services.
Well, you're right, but I remember the last conversation we had.
Yeah.
But we'll look at it, is that the Township of Nutley has a contract with them, okay?
Right.
Now, if there are certain provisions in your contract with them, Counselor, correct me if I'm wrong, we would have no say in that, correct? Other than providing you with the information that we have.
Right, we can't force them to charge or not charge their own residents. That would be a condo association issue, but I'll look at it, I want to look at it.
Well, we're not a condo, we're a co-op, but that's beside the point.
Similar-
Yeah, exactly. But the point is then, I mean, I don't want to use the term theft, you know, by deception.
Yeah.
But I, I, I mean, that's, that's what's on the tip of my tongue here, and I can't believe, you know, your Commissioners, that you can't possibly say that, we have a meeting Thursday night for all the shareholders, and it's going to be at the clubhouse, and they're deceiving us. They're saying, according to this, that they're charging us. So, in other words, and when I brought this point up, I said, you're getting reimbursed according to this article here, you're getting reimbursed, so why are you charging us?
I don't know, I don't know what to say.
Well, what recourse do we have?
Diane, let Mr. Janet Temple take a look at the, at the contract, and we'll go from there, okay?
I mean, I'd like to see them carried out in handcuffs, personally. I mean, really, I mean, this, this is, this is, this is misleading, this is saying to me that you're not, they're not receiving the money from you. You understand what I'm saying? So, this doesn't make you look-
I think, I think we understand the issue. I think we just need to look at what's, what's on, what's in writing.
All right, so what do I do from now, because Thursday's the meeting?
I'll get your number before you leave.
All right, please. I wish, you know, I wish one of you would attend and say, how come? You know, we're paying you, why are you charging the people? I really mean that. It's very, it's really upsetting to be, you know, be deceived like that.
Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Hi, my name is Mary Ann Mandola. I am also a shareholder at Arbor Hills. We've had this discussion with the Board of Directors many, many times. We pay our taxes to the town, property taxes. The town is reimbursing Arbor Hills for the, their contract with the carding company, and they're collecting money from us. So, I am paying taxes to the town, and I am paying, again, for services that other taxpaying residents of the town don't have to pay for. There's something not right.
Can I ask a question? You're an owner, right?
Yes.
And you own a certain percentage shares in the entire property as a co-op owner, right? Has there been elections to oust the current Board of Directors?
Let me put it this way, the President of the Board was the President of the Board for 25 years.
I know, but that's, the issue is you can gather enough support-
We, we cannot get anyone else elected to the Board.
But you understand that this Board does not have the power to enforce a contract situation on them. Do you understand that?
But if the town is reimbursing them fully for what they're paying the carding company, then why are they also collecting money from us?
I'm saying, that's a private, the way I'm hearing it, it's that if we're abiding by our contract, which I believe we probably are, then your, your relationship contractually with the Directors is the issue. The Township doesn't have the authority to go in there and force them to not charge you for something that you believe you're already paying taxes for.
Even though we already pay taxes for the service.
That's the power of being in a co-op or being in a condo association, is the power to, you're an owner, you own a percentage, you, those people are supposed to work for you, and you're supposed to vote them out if they're not doing what they're supposed to.
They're impossible to reason with or to deal with, impossible. Thank you.
I'll, I'll talk to Diane, and I'll see what I can find out.
Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Neil Henning, 31 Terrace Ave. I have a question about the $1 million exemption that we got from the county to make up the loss from the state. My understanding is that's a one-time shot, is that correct?
I'd clarify, $1 million exemption?
Yeah, didn't we, in order to make up that 1.8 that we got cut from the state, a million of it was some type of exemption from the county, correct?
No. What happened was, we originally were told that our aid was cut by 2.8 million. We then actually received an increase in our aid of $1 million to increase it from 2.6 to, round numbers, to 3.6. The remaining 1.8 million, part of that was, was included as a tax increase in July, and there was a remaining $1 million. In order to absorb that for the November bills that are coming out very shortly, one, the municipality zeroed out the municipal portion of that shortfall, and the school board reimbursed us for school crossing guards to reduce our appropriation, which offset substantially the school board portion of that increase. The county piece, we did not have to pay them for this year, but the effect of that is that the county will go through their budget process, they will figure out what their increase is, and that the remaining, they'll get their rate adopted, and we get notified of that. We will not have, going forward, that money from state aid for that portion of that aid, which was $176,000, to contribute towards the county tax, and that in effect will be a county tax increase.
So, the makeup of this, is this a temporary or is this a real cut? In other words, is this, is this a one-time shot or?
Clearly, clearly what happened to get through the November bills is a one-time shot.
Okay, thank you.
What we have talked about, though, is, as you, as you may have heard, is that we're actually looking at operations, services, including personnel, to address how do we manage taxes in 2018.
Yeah, because that's coming back, and we don't know what we're going to get from the state next year.
Right, we're, and we haven't stopped negotiating, we're advising the state of what our situation is, but we're in transition of governments.
The second question is the Chickolini property. Do we know what the carrying cost is on that property?
Off the top of my head, no. I don't have that number.
Well, now, we're not getting any rent on that anymore, is that correct? It's empty now?
It's not empty yet, they're still in the process of closing.
It's empty today.
Close, I was there earlier, they still had a few things in there, but I'm going to see Bob Chickolini tomorrow, but I, yeah, but they're winding down, pretty much.
So, would it be accurate to say the carrying cost is now the $3.4 million bond and the taxes that we lost on the, on the property?
The interest on the bond, yes, and the, and the loss of the taxes temporarily, yes.
So, my estimate was over $100,000 a year. So, I guess the question is, what is our plan for that property, and what has taken so long? Because now we've had that property for quite a while, and I don't see any movement, and my understanding is when the town bought that, it was going to get subdivided, we were going to put a parking lot in the back, and the front was going to get sold, and now we're still sitting on it, there's no parking lot, and now we're losing $100,000 a year.
Mr. Janet Temple?
The, we have, I'm sure you know we've obtained a planner who's working on a plan for that entire area. One of the complicating issues is the co-op litigation that is currently going on, we're trying to resolve our co-op obligation, that's been going on, that litigation's been going on for some time, and it's kind of, it's kind of trying to do it in the right order so that we can abide by our co-op obligations and yet develop the property responsibly. We expect probably by the end of the month to have more information from the planner, and I expect that soon the Commissioners will be moving on a plan for the entire site.
My understanding is there's no issue on co-op if it stays as a commercial property, correct?
It's not true.
How, how is it a co-op issue?
If it's possibly going to be residential, then it has to be-
If it's residential, but if it's commercial, then, then there is none.
Well, we don't know exactly what it's going to be yet, but if there's a possibility that it could be residential, then it has to be considered.
But isn't that the builder's responsibility?
Well, that's partly the town's responsibility to fulfill their co-op obligations. It is the town's responsibility to properly plan any project that is done from now on.
Isn't that, then who's responsible? Is that the zoning board, the planning board, that makes sure that whatever the new construction is has the right amount of color?
Well, I think it's the town's obligation as a whole, and the zoning board and planning board understand that there may be requirements of any new approvals, they've already done that in a couple approvals already, a certain percentage set aside for co-op obligation. So, we're still trying to set what our co-op obligation's going to be by way of settlement. There's some cases coming down in Mercer County in the next month that will set the tone for the rest of the state, we hope, and will maybe lead to a settlement that the town could afford and could live with in terms of our obligation.
And the bike shop, can you tell me how many of those apartments are rented now?
I think all of them but one. Frank, three? Right, so three, three apartments, and the other side of the building, right?
Correct. Does the income off the bike shop cover our carrying cost?
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that question.
Yes, it does, at this point it does.
It does, and what's our plan with that bike shop?
The expectation is, is that it will be used to help meet the capacity issues and the infrastructure requirements for the school.
So, the town would sell that to the school district, or would give it to the school district, or how's that work?
Yeah, under statute, it doesn't matter whether it's, we, whether we bought it or the school bought it, taxpayers would only pay for it once, so we would, we would not be able to sell it to the tech, to the school, because they would have to raise the tax dollars to reimburse us for that, so it's just a one-time cost. But, but the expectation is, is that once it's clear in the direction of where they're going to go with the school, that would transfer to the school.
And that being said, the, I'd like to know where the Commissioners stand on the proposed Board of Ed referendum, whether each one of you are for the referendum or against the referendum.
Could I, you up there?
Yeah.
Let's start, everybody, I'll start.
Mr. Henning, we've, we've looked at their plan, we understand the overcrowding issue that's in the school, and something needs to be done to address it, and I think it's up to the, the public to decide if they're in favor of it, not in favor of going forward with, with the referendum. As far as I'm concerned, I think we need to address the overcrowding issue, and right now, they've gone through all the processes, and I, and I think that, you know, we don't have many options, so let's, let's put it up for a vote and see where it goes.
So, then you're for the referendum?
I answered the question, Mr. Henning. You, you take from it what you want, all right?
Any other Commissioners? Rogers?
I fully understand the need for expansion. I do that, I do understand that. I'm very, very concerned about the tax rate and the impact taxes will have on this community. At this point, I'm opposed to it. I, I, I really believe that we have a problem in town, we really do, and, but I also, I'm very concerned about our senior citizens, I'm turning, I'm very concerned about the number of people who are really having a hard time even putting food on their table. So, at this point, I'm opposed to it, and that's my answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Petracca?
I have to say, I, I have to kind of echo Commissioner Rogers' point of, you know, the taxes continuing to go up, and now we're going to go for another referendum. The first one was, I guess, not so calculated is a nice way of putting it, and the way it got done. I also am of the opinion where I really believe that these schools and our ratings tie into our house values as well, and if we do nothing, I guess then we can't expect our schools to improve. But at this point, I am in favor of a referendum, but I'm not in favor of a $70 million referendum.
$70 million one is going to be the only one you're going to get to vote on, so I guess that means you're against it, at this point. Commissioner Tucci?
Sure. I think it comes down to being an affordability question. I think we all recognize that the space needs of the district, and I think we all realize the importance of the schools and improving our schools to a point where the town remains attractive to, not only to the people that are here now, but for future generations moving in. In light of what's going on with the state aid and the work that we have before us in dealing with the 2018 budget, I'm taking a very hard look at that, but unfortunately, I am not going to commit to you this evening one way or the other. I want to continue to explore what options are available to us, but I think at the end of the day, it boils down to an affordability question, not a question of need. The need is absolutely there, the way we address that need, I believe, is a $64,000 question.
Commissioner Evans?
Yes. For most of the Commissioners addressed, if you actually look at why we're asking for, the school board is asking for the referendum and the expansion of their facilities, I've, basically have said many times that we are using early to mid 20th century infrastructure to solve 21st century educational issues, which, they're in conflict, so when you think about older infrastructure, 21st century needs, especially around the advancements and the integration of curricula, requiring smaller classroom size, the requirements, federal, federal requirements around special needs children and the support for special needs children. In our school system, 18% of our children are classified, right? We have an autism program. Those are just, just the realities of it. They've done the research to have a demographic, look at what the projection is for growth in enrollment over the next 10 years, which is predominantly from the turnover of our single-family homes, given the number of, as, as I would say, empty nesters that are in town, and the town is in transition in that regard, so there's the likelihood of higher demand. All of those are very, very real factors that drive justification for a need to invest in those schools, which was in part why the Board of Commissioners negotiated to preserve the Davis property, right? Because in the event there is a need to do something, if we didn't preserve that property, where would they go? Where would they be, they wouldn't have that opportunity to do that. Having said all that, I have advised the Board that I have questions regarding the cost, and I'm not yet willing to commit until I have the opportunity to go through that, that analysis to understand why what they're asking for is actually necessary. And the second piece is, I recognize, when you look at the plans, that I wouldn't say it's an ideal solution, but it's a preferred solution, and I've asked the question around, if we cannot achieve the preferred solution, what is the option other than telling the residents of town that they must increase class size, or they must have children work in undersized rooms or spaces that aren't suitable? There, and I don't have an answer to that question, so I have yet to make a commitment to it because I have outstanding questions, and I've advised the Board that I need to sit down with them, and they've agreed to do that, we just haven't sat down yet.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henning. Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners?
Rory Moore, 462 Chestnut Street. Mr. Evans, I was stunned by your answer, the bike shop property. We purchased that in anticipation of the school expansion. When I asked Ms. Glazer publicly, she said there's no plan B, so if it does, if the bond issue fails, they have to move the trailers immediately. Does that mean you're going to move the, sell the property if that happens? Does that mean you're gonna move, sell the property if that happens?
If there is no need for that property, the township is not in the business of being a landlord. So, the answer would be yes, that property would be obviously put up to public bid and would be sold.
So, based on Ms. Glazer saying there is no Plan B, and she would have to immediately move two trailers, that would negate the property for us at all, wouldn't it?
If their solution says, and I'm not convinced there's that there isn't a Plan B, right?
There is no Plan B?
They may not have articulated a Plan B. I'm just saying personally, I don't believe that there isn't a Plan B option. They may not have articulated it, but there has to be a discussion around what that could be, right? So, it could be, you know, there could be a solution that, a Plan B, not desirable, pretty ugly, but to use the Davis property and put more trailers right there to bring the children to the middle school. It's an ugly option. It's not something that's been discussed. What I'm trying to tell you is that other options have to be explored and evaluated as to their feasibility, given, as Morrow mentioned, the affordability issues that we face as a community, and what we need to do to make sure that our children have a qualified, quality education, and also that Nutley itself remains a desirable place to bring your children and raise a family.
Well, I'm not disputing on as far as the children. I'm just addressing, because your answer is probably 180 degrees out from what Ms. Glazer said.
It might be.
But if she was representing, and this is my only concern, if she's representing, there is no Plan B, we immediately have to move the trailers for 2021, which was her answer, that would mean that property, because we had asked specifically, there was no Plan B.
I understand that. I was there that evening.
So, am I to understand that this goes down, that property would pretty quickly go up for sale?
No, that would be incorrect.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to address the Board of the Commissioners this evening?
Just a comment, right?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
If the referendum goes down, the school board has the obligation to revisit the referendum and come up with an alternative proposal before we would actually look to change the use of that property.
Hi, Larry Cohen. I live in Fanwood, New Jersey, but I'm here, obviously, as a volunteer legislative leader with the humane side of the United States. I simply want to say thank you. I want to thank Commissioner Rogers for his willingness to work with my colleagues and I on this. It was a privilege, really. I want to thank the commission for taking this seriously, and obviously, most of all, I want to thank you for your passage of this pet store ordinance. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Janice Fisher, Manasquan. On behalf of my advocacy group, Friends of Animals United, New Jersey, ditto what my colleague Larry Cohen just said. Thank you so much for diligently weighing the issues. I know it was sort of an arduous thing. You get a lot of feedback on this, but most importantly, thank you for becoming what I consider a community within truly animal-friendly communities by adopting the ordinance tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Island Coyote from Hamilton, New Jersey. On behalf of myself and the New Jersey Residents Against Puppy Mills and all the dogs and cats, thank you for passing that ordinance tonight. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address the Board of the Commissioners this evening?
Michael O'Drill, 133 High Street. I'd like to first start off by saying, no education system is worth propi taxing out its own homeowners. As I understand it, Mr. Rogers, Commissioner Rogers, sorry, is not for the referendum at this moment. Commissioner Petracca is for the referendum, but he does not agree with the price tag. Mr. Tucci?
Michael, just to be clear on that, that's exactly what I'm saying, just so you know.
Yeah.
I think something needs to be done, but $70 million to burden the taxpayers with at this time is exuberant, with not knowing what the voter rateable is gonna be in the future.
Okay. I understand, Commissioner Tucci doesn't want to give an answer, and I think I can say the same from Commissioner Evans.
Hold on, hold on. Let me clarify that. Let me clarify that, because you're totally misrepresenting. It's not that I don't want to give an answer.
No, you don't have an answer.
I gave you an answer, all right? You may not like it.
No, what was the answer again?
My answer was, it's a question of affordability. It's not a question of need. All right? We all accept the fact that we need additional space for our children to be educated properly and for the town to remain desirable, not only for people here, but for new people moving in, all right? But at this point in time, all right, I need to consider what some of the alternatives can be. And I've heard here tonight, all right, that Mr. Moore stated that the superintendent said there is no Plan B. Well, there may not be a Plan B right now in place, but there's always a Plan B.
Okay, and I understand Commissioner Evans doesn't have an answer at this moment, too, Michael?
Nope, that would be wrong, for the same reason that Commissioner Tucci just explained. I gave very articulate reasons why it's important to have a look at why we need to address our schools and what's driving that, the real reasons that's driving that, right? Not the hype around apartments, but the real reasons that's driving that. The question I have said is that I have yet to look at the cost of it, similar to Commissioner Petracca, and I have a question mark, just like Commissioner Tucci is. If it's not this solution, what's the alternatives?
Okay.
Maybe that hasn't been articulated yet, but it will need to be articulated to, I would expect, not only myself, but the Board of Commissioners.
Okay, and Mayor Scarpelli. Previous week, I saw a video produced by the Nutley High School, I think it was, and you started it off.
Yes, I did.
And I'm assuming, by you being in that video, are you for the referendum? Yes or no?
Did you listen to the video?
Well, I was explaining the different...
Did you listen to what I said in the video?
Well, I want to hear from you.
You brought up the video. I'm asking, did you listen to what I said in the video?
Well, I did, but it seems like you are for the referendum, because...
I am for, we have an overcrowding issue at our schools that needs to be addressed. We need, as a community, to come together and figure out how we're going to solve the problem. Part of that process is to put it up for a vote, and let's see what the public thinks. That's what I answered before, and that's what I'm answering now. All the reasons are, is it affordable to Nutley taxpayers? They're gonna have a voice in that, aren't they? Two, the timing stinks.
Okay, now, I want to talk about...
But, let me finish, Michael.
Okay, because this is my five minutes, that's why.
Well, I don't cut you off when we talk. The timing stinks. Based on where we are, we're transitional aid. But you know what? It is what it is. It's not gonna get any better. It's not gonna get any better.
Well, two points I want to bring up. You mentioned the vote. Like I said before publicly, I find it very disturbing, and I think it's wrong that we're gonna have this $70.4 million referendum vote on December 12th, when we should have it November 7th, because elections in a small town does cost a lot of money, and we end up paying for it. And the other thing I want to say...
I suggest you bring that up at the Board of Education.
Oh, I have. It's on video, too, but they totally voted to have it on December 12th anyway. And the other thing I was gonna say...
Michael, excuse me one second. Do we know why they are doing that?
Oh, because of a 60-day thing. It seems like...
No, I'm not asking you, Mike. I'm just saying, I'm just saying. I don't know the exact reason. I think it has to do with where they were with plans and stuff, but I'm not gonna answer for them.
Well, the thing is, this is really a crucial vote to the homeowners of this town. And not only do we get a state aid cut, now we have this $70.4 million propi tax hiking referendum that's looming over us homeowners, that's gonna be voted on December 12th. And it seems like they want to suppress the vote, because it might snow that day, and the people who are against it, like the elderly, might not want to show up to vote, because they might feel they might slip and fall. And another thing I want to say, year after year, yes, our propi taxes keep going up for many reasons. And when you do that to us, no, I'm sorry, when that happens to us, more and more of our expendable cash that we homeowners truly work hard for five, six days a week gets propi taxed right out of our hands, right out of our wallets, and that gives us less expendable cash to support the businesses in this town, including your businesses that you own. So, you commissioners have to lead, like I always said, in a more conservative fashion. We can't afford this propi tax hiking referendum flat out, because a lot of people are gonna hurt. Just like Commissioner Rogers stated, it's gonna hurt a lot of homeowners. And this is not the homeowner's fault. And the reason why we have this problem is because there has to be, I'm gonna say it as lightly as I can, nice and... There has to be a muzzle put on our planning and zoning board not to allow more apartment buildings to be built, because that overcrowds our public school system.
Mayor.
And another thing, I'm sorry, please let me interrupt. This town is a small, humble town of family homes. We should try as hard as we can to keep it that way. Let Patterson get bigger. Let Newark get bigger and bigger. Clifton get bigger, but not Nutley. Let's keep it a small town. That's what the goal should be.
Thank you, Michael.
Michael, just, I gotta, I got to.
No, let him go. Let him whip it.
Would you yield to me, Commissioner?
I will yield to you.
Thank you. Michael, there's one thing I want to really, really make clear. Every commissioner up here, believe me when I tell you, is very concerned about the taxes in town. We are on the different side of this issue. But the side, the differences have nothing to do with the absolute concern about our taxpayers. And it's important for the people to know that. Everyone up here is struggling, and I'm sure members of the school board are struggling. How do we meet the needs, as Commissioner Tucci and Commissioner Evans said, and also meet the affordability of the township? There's gotta be a medium in between all of this. And you're right, people are gonna get hurt, all right? And we know that. They know that. And we want to be able to make sure that the kids don't get hurt as well. I have my reasons why I'm against it. I will articulate it as I move along, but in defense of my colleagues, I just want to make sure that the public understand that they are as concerned as anyone who is opposed to it with regard to the taxpaying public. Believe me, I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner?
Michael, I just have a couple of questions. One is, I don't own a business in town, so when you say "our businesses," I just want to be clear.
I know. I want to be clear.
I just wanted to be clear on the record. When you look at a classroom in Nutley, in our Nutley school system, and you walk, you've been in the Nutley schools, haven't you?
Yeah.
And you walked in, you saw the classroom, and you saw the size of that classroom, right? That classroom, if you roll back the clock to the 1970s and 80s, when we were graduating high school classes of between 500 and 600, right? And today, we're nowhere near that in graduating high school class of students, right? It raises the question that if we're, classes are, overall classes that are graduating each year are smaller, and the space, which was much larger, doesn't work anymore, it raises a question as to why, what's causing that? Because one would think that if everything was equal, that with the large classroom and smaller class size or fewer students enrolled in our school system, you would think there'd be plenty of room. But there's not. When you look at the integration of curricula, right? In my career, I was a chief learning officer for Price Warehouse Coopers. I was the president of a university that had over 50,000 students in it. So, this is a topic, aside from being a CPA, I know something about, right? So, when you look at the complexity of curricula, the integration of curricula, math, science, English, all being brought together, the fact that a teacher years ago didn't have to be certified in his subject matter at the grade school level, but must be certified today in order to teach that complex curricula to children and who are learning things that most sixth graders, fifth graders never had before. You look at the back, you say, wow, there's a complexity of curricula that's causing a need to have a smaller classroom size. So, the room is really big. I just have to put fewer students in it in order for those students to be equipped and to be successful in their future. Because if we don't address that, it's a great disservice to our children, the children of the community. We have to recognize that. Second, when you think about the requirements around a special needs child and the advancements in the expansion of, say, the autism spectrum of what classifies a student, and the fact that we have that huge room that, for certain classes, has four students in it by law. Can't have more than four students in it. When we make a great academic decision that says, our kindergarten children need to go to school for the full day, not a half day, a full day, and it takes nine classrooms out of circulation, because they're now committed for their full day, you have infrastructure issues. So, when you stand up here and you say, we cannot afford the taxes to do this, but offer no solution other than the fact I don't want to pay taxes, right? It's actually a bit frustrating.
I did offer a solution.
I said, gotta control the...
Michael, your time's up. It's Commissioner's turn.
I'm trying to be clear. I'm trying to be clear. Apartments, the greater risk to our schools is not apartments. No, it's not. It's the turnover of single-family homes and other, and two-family homes, where they no longer have children in our classroom, and they are reaching the age where they want to downsize. They want to change their living requirement, which they are allowed to do. Are you suggesting that when they go to sell, we put a sign up, no children allowed in this home? Because we don't want, we don't want to expand our schools?
All I'm suggesting is, don't allow any more apartment buildings, buy apartments and houses.
I appreciate your comment. I completely disagree with it, because the greater issue that we face is not those apartments. The other thing, when you talk about taxes, and you talk about the planning board, and you make those comments, understand, the issue that we're facing with Hoffman &amp; Roche, we lost since 2012, $8.8 million a year in revenue. We lost $2.1 million in 2012, before they announced they were closing, and we lost $6.6 after. Today, we receive $4.2 million worth of revenue from Hoffman &amp; Roche. We also have an outstanding tax appeal with the owners of Hoffman &amp; Roche, because they bought it for less than what it's assessed for right now, and it's in tax court. We have an exposure to potentially lose more. So, while we have an opportunity, the one thing that's very clear to me is that we'll never address your issue about controlling taxes or lowering taxes unless we look at revenue. The advancements that we've made in new development in town today is an annuity of new taxpayers paying new tax dollars, not coming out of your pocket or any existing taxpayer's pocket, is $2.4 million. So, we've actually been able to make up a piece of what we lost. The decisions that this board must make in terms of, others are looking for some form of senior assisted living or specialized living conditions. Others are saying, we don't want residential there. Keep it a science site. The challenge that we face is reconciling that when all those decisions are made, we may not like the tax bill. Because we will face a challenge that, once that property is converted and those buildings are occupied, the tax revenues associated with that could be significantly less on a permanent basis. This board is faced with those complex issues. In addition to dealing with COA litigation, which basically would have a significant economic negative effect on our town, should all of that come through. Michael, I share this with you, not to attack you, and that's not my intent.
No, I know, you're not.
My intent is to hope that, from that, is that you understand how complex the financial outlook is, and realistically, what could be done around taxes, because we're facing that right now, and we're gonna be going into a session to talk about this further, right? The important part of all of this is, the decisions that we have to make are very difficult. They're complex. We are gonna take our time to do that. And maybe, as you were hearing tonight, that maybe there's a question about whether or not the current recommendation for expanding our schools is the right one? our schools is the right one? Let's not get confused, or confuse that with the importance of making sure that we have a sound, viable school system for the next generation of our children of this community, and that Nutley recognizes that this is a place that we will provide for the health, welfare, and the safety of the community, and we will continue to attract Nutley as a great place to live and to raise a family. Thank you.
Anybody else wanted to be, to address the Board of Commissioners this evening? Seeing none, can we have a motion to go into executive?
I make a motion to go into executive.
For personnel and contract negotiations?
Yes.
That's my understanding, yes. Second.
Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, permits the exclusion of, of the public from meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas the public bodies have the opinion that such, such circumstances exist. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey decides to proceed to close executive session, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley move into close executive session to discuss personnel and contract negotiations. Be it further resolved at a time when such discussions may be disclosed to the public shall be when such disclosures may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nutley pending and/or anticipated legal personnel contractual matters and other matters within the exceptions provided for by statute. Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. We will be calling back-